Let's look at how many the father. Everything that's said and done here with his mind, they give you honor and pray and get good and give them to me.
Amen.
Case.
Will you call roll please with Harris?
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Present.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain. Mr. Michael Cheatham.
Aye.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan is absent. Mr. Jason McCray. Mr. Keith Mills. Mr. Richard Olivoe. Dr. Chrissy Oakland. President Louis Kemp.
President, who have a corner. Don't tell me the motion to approve the agenda, please. Well, Mr. McCray, same about Mr. Armstead, any discussion, question from the audience, is it all in favor?
Aye.
In oppose, motion carries. First on the agenda, old business, adopted minutes from November third, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. We have Dr. Quinn. Same about Coach Cheatham, any discussion, question from the audience, is it all in favor?
Aye.
In oppose, motion carries. Next on the agenda, adopted minutes from November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
Make a motion.
Well, Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Second, well, Mr. Armstead, any discussion, question from the audience, is it all in favor?
Aye.
In oppose, motion carries. New business, take action or propose amendment to Aggregatory Formulary District Ordinance, twelve one oh two, B four. We just had a public hearing on it, so what's the pleasure of the jury?
Uh, make a motion that we move forward with, uh, getting our ordinance in order for the solo form.
Does that mean that you accept it as it is?
Yeah.
Got a motion in a second?
I'd like to wait and look at backwards what, um, what the state has, the state's, um, restrictions.
Well, the first one died because of lack of a second, so. So no way should be taken, well, we'll have a substitute motion at all. So no way, so why should we take it?
A substitute motion to review, um, the state's.
You gotta get a second or you can't get a second.
I'll second.
All in favor of the second, substitute motion?
Aye.
In oppose, motion carries, so substitute motion pending, we're getting information on the, on the state ordinance and we'll go through. Okay, update on status of proposed twenty twenty six area operating budget, Falken Winkler.
All right, good evening, I'm Lauren Sherman, and I'm here, um, from Falken Winkler. To show you your, this is just an introduction, um, for y'all to take the budget, um, look at it, uh, give Yamiche any questions that you have, and the adoption will come at the next meeting, also, those will be available to the public after today. Um, there's a lot here, but we can run through, um, the highlights, your, the top page is gonna be your twenty twenty six budget summary by all your major funds, um, as a, a summary, but what we need to do is go over our proposed amendments to the twenty twenty five budget, and then also look at your projected twenty twenty six. So if you flip the page, it starts your general fund. And as you can see here, you're gonna have your actuals. Um, first column is your actuals for twenty twenty four, your original adopted twenty twenty five, when y'all adopted it last year. Your actuals, year to date through the end of September twenty twenty five. We then, um, as of the September numbers, we do a, a annualization, we can try to predict what the rest of the year will look like. That's how we get your proposed amendment numbers. Your new proposed twenty twenty five budget, and then we project out your twenty twenty six. So those are your columns, and that's how it's gonna look across all your funds. Your general fund is made up of your admin department, your public safety, homeland security, your sheriff's office prison, your fire, which is just one grand, it's an in and an out. Public safety, other, public works, building code, public works, other. Culture and recreation, council on aging, elections, judicial, J O P and constables, and judicial, other. Page number one and number two is your revenues for general fund, and then you'll see the same departments in the same order following that at, for your expenses. I'm gonna hit just the highlights here, unless anyone has any questions as of right now. The proposed amendment, total revenue changes for your general fund for your twenty twenty five. Total revenue changes is we propose that you go up in revenues by five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which is great news, and this is primarily made up of a few things, but it is gonna lead to receiving more property and sales tax revenue. All right. We also have a change in license and permits revenue going up. And we propose that your twenty twenty six, uh, revenue for a general fund is three point five eight nine million, which is a little bit higher than twenty twenty five. We are estimating that your property and sales tax will continue to go up in the same trends. Correct. For your expenses. We will go down in total for general fund for your twenty twenty five proposed amend expenses by just about twelve thousand dollars. Which will lead, leave your twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five total expenditures at little over three point eight million, I mean, sorry, three point three eight million. And going up for twenty twenty six projected expenditures at around three point five million. This will leave your net change in fund balance for twenty twenty five of fifty five thousand to the good. As you can see, on your second column, that original adopted for twenty twenty five, we were in a deficit here, and we are able to crawl out of that deficit a little bit for twenty twenty five, as you can see, now we're fifty five thousand to the good. And that is due to the extra revenue coming in from your sales tax, property tax, and being very, um, being, watching your spending here in the general fund. Our net fund balance for twenty twenty six, we are estimating to the good eighty eight thousand dollars. You will see on your summary page at the very beginning of the packet, you're gonna see that, um, the very first column here for twenty twenty six, your general fund, we are in a deficit in our, to our fund balance, and that's because of your transfers out, your transfers out to the coroner and criminal court. Okay. Again, this is a, a lot of information, so like I said, I'm open to all the questions, just wanna hit some highlights here. Um, moving on to road and bridge. It's a little bit easier to see, it's just one page. Road and bridge, it's gonna be in the same format, but, um, our proposed amendments for twenty twenty five for our revenue, we will go up almost three hundred thousand dollars. And this again is due to your, uh, your sales and other tax revenue going up. And that will leave us a total revenue proposed for twenty twenty five, two point seven million. And we are projected to go up from there, um, to right over three million for twenty twenty six. Our expenses. We are, um, we are going up in expenses, we do need to change quite a few expense items, we need to go up by about one point one million. And you're gonna see where these categories lie, so it's in your personnel. Um, repairs and maintenance, it's in your capital outlay, your debt service, your transfers out. As y'all remember, vehicles being purchased and stuff of, of that nature. For our projected for twenty twenty six, we're projecting revenues to be right over three million, and our expenditures to be about two point six million. Our capital outlay here has gone down as only a few things need to be purchased for capital outlay. Personnel hopefully staying about the same. And this is leaving you with a net change of three hundred and fifty thousand to the good. We are dipping into our fund balance for twenty twenty five. Um, for road and bridge, as you can see on the first page, road and bridge does have the fund balance to cover that. And that is in your second column on your, on your first page, your fund balance there is at the end. Moving on to solid waste. For twenty twenty five, our revenue proposed amendments, uh, we will go up in sales tax revenue by about two hundred and twenty five thousand. That is what our, we're trending, so our proposed total revenues for twenty twenty five is right over two point five million, and we will keep it the same for twenty twenty six. Under our expenditures, we are also having to go up for the same reasons as you saw with road and bridge, professional services, personnel, I will say in the professional services, that amendment, that is that, um, series invoice that it's possible it goes away, we wanted to build it in, so we don't have any sort of budget findings, and if we don't need it, we don't need it. Okay. That is here under solid waste in the professional services, it's in the four hundred thousands in the proposed amendment. Yeah. Um, because if you do end up having to pay that in twenty twenty five, we don't have it in here, it could give us a budget finding. For, um, our proposed twenty twenty five total expenditures is right at three million, and we are projected to go down for twenty twenty six, even with that capital outlay we have in here after talking, um, with Mr. Frosty, to two point nine. This is leaving us in a deficit for both years, there's something to keep in mind. You can see on your front page, you have your fund balance, that solid waste does have the fund balance to cover the deficit, it's just something to be mindful of. Yes. Your fund balance, um, for solid waste at the beginning with these twenty twenty five numbers in, so the beginning of twenty twenty six is three point five seven million. All right. Onto health unit. Again, same good trend, we're going up in revenue proposed for twenty twenty five, the eighty four thousand leaving us right over one point two million in revenue for twenty twenty five, and we're gonna have the same for twenty twenty six. Not much change in our expenditures, need to go up about five thousand dollars, leaving you a total expenditures for twenty twenty five of three hundred and fifty four thousand. Going up, um, in twenty twenty six to eight hundred and twenty one thousand. This is our built-in transfer out, you can see the transfer out for this health unit is four hundred thousand in twenty twenty six, this is gonna be the portion that the health unit will pay road and bridge and the general fund back. Yes, we will start going by what, um, they need to pay out based off of the tax rule, and I know you're probably wondering about twenty twenty five. Um, Scott has all of that information, you will have it, and it will be built in this budget, the twenty twenty five budget for the next meeting. You will see it prior to that, he has to go over that with Yamiche. And that's what the general fund owes the health unit back. Next, we have the coroner fund. Proposed amendments for revenue in the coroner, coroner fund will go up about twenty one thousand dollars. This is our transfer in, anything that the coroner fund ha, doesn't have, they have to have a z, at least a zero balance, it has to come from the general fund. That is what your transfers are for. Um, tw- uh, twenty twenty five, we have a total revenue of three hundred and thirty thousand. Twenty twenty six, proposed revenue of three hundred and thirty one thousand five hundred dollars, that's gonna be your same expenditures. Whatever, uh, like I said, the coroner fund, it's gonna, net change will be zero because the general fund moves the money over to cover. And that's the same with your next one, that's criminal court. We just have a slight proposed decrease for our fines, court fines of ten thousand dollars, leaving our total revenue for twenty twenty five of a hundred and fifteen thousand, the same projected for twenty twenty six. We also took that ten from office expense as it was trending down, so we have a proposed expense of the same, a hundred and fifteen thousand for both years.
Well, like you stated, for the last six, seven months, tail tax without, I mean, way up, I don't understand, I hope it continues.
Hope it stays the same, absolutely.
And with the agglom tax, it's gonna be higher, y'all, so.
Yes, I think, um, it stays the same, that we need to watch the general fund. Um, and, and be very mindful of your general fund, especially since the, the tax did not pass. So you're not out of the woods here with general fund?
But it's not grooming dome either, I don't know that. And I'm debating right now whether to put that on the ballot sometime, let the sheriff write it back before the board, it hasn't worked yet. I've been debating on putting it back, which we probably will, but you have to wait six months anyway.
Yeah, as you see on the front page, you can see clearly, um, your fund balance in your health unit. And so, the only thing that the ordinance says for your health unit fund balance is they need to carry a fund balance of one year's expenses. So if you go to your one year's expense for your health unit, you know, it's about four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is all that they should have in there.
And it's stated right now, nine percent go to road and bridge and ten percent to the general fund.
Yes. Five percent to the general fund.
I actually have a question for Sam, don't we have a big court case coming up in twenty six, um, from a, from a previous murder case that they were tried before and they're coming back again, and do we have to bill that? And my question then for you is, do we have to bill that in here, or should we bill it in?
We should have anything in twenty six.
Yeah, we did ask.
Let's keep our fingers crossed, that was fortunately with the.
We had seven twenty five, we had two in twenty twenty five. But I just can't, I don't think we're gonna.
I was thinking about the lady that needs the interpreter.
No, it's done, it's done.
It's done now, okay.
For now.
No, we'll come back up.
So we need to reach out to all.
Hall department.
Yeah, to, yeah. I just wanna commend our staff, and Yamiche's done a great job, watching our money, along with Falken Winkler and stuff.
This is so easy to understand, and you made it so soon.
I hope so, it's a lot of information, um, like I said, this is just the introduction, and, and this is, like it says, it's a draft for a reason, because this is, on the fifteenth is when we do have to, um, adopt it. Um, or really, I should say we have to adopt it before the end of the year, so not on the fifteenth, but that's when the meeting will be to adopt it. So please, any questions or concerns, if you just get them to Yamiche, and she will get them to us.
And it will be for public viewing.
This is for public viewing after today, yes. And it will also be posted. Yes.
Any questions?
Right, thank y'all, thank you.
Please go home and look over, real close, it's juror, okay?
I don't have yours, but you can use mine.
I got too much stuff to come here. I got it. I'm more than. Okay, let's move on, update. No, I'm sorry, T-Mobile presentation, on the here. Okay. Discuss, take action if necessary on appraisal and sealed bids for property at twelve eight seventeen Cypress Street. It's adjudicated property, and a mail, this process goes through the question of this property. And we were discussing with Sam about the two right in the session, the process we have to go through. We sold property a couple of years ago to Mr. Jeff Moody, and we're using the same format. Well, without adjudicated property, what, you know what, you go through.
That's what I'm wondering, if we have a lot, and I'm sure we do, and we have a budget deficit, why aren't we selling some of our property?
You place this on, wait for Sarah.
So I do wanna say this, and I talked with the assessor this morning, I think the last, if you all do have a, um, power overturning a civic source, and I know you have this in maybe twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, um, I did talk with the assessor this morning, and I think the last time the police jury did, Mr. Roushawn was here, and, um, he worked on getting the adjudicated properties down by sending out some, um, different mailings and, and things to try to get, you know, with payee, um, or whatever. So Ms., um, Diana is here now, I think you all met Ms. Diana at the last meeting, I'm gonna take her over this week to meet, um, the assessor, and we will work on trying to do some mailings like Mr. JR did in the past to see if there's some properties that we can actually get, um, the, you know, payments in for. So that's something that we're gonna, um, work on, I don't think that that's been done since, um, Mr. JR, that we didn't have anyone here to in the office to just do that, so we spoke today, and that's something that we're gonna move forward.
Do we know about how many we have?
I, I, I received the list, um, maybe about two years ago, but. And, um, no, but that's something that we'll get from the assessor.
But it's more than a handful, isn't it, it's more than four or five.
With the, the five minute, um, Mr. Stank.
They're way more than four or five.
But we can use that money, maybe to sell it.
Yeah, but most of them, abandoned, overhauls, something, they're really not worth that. We have some pretty solid property, like, like the one that's.
This was a nice house.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one the man talking about.
It appears because when you don't pay your taxes, and it goes up for sheriffs and for tax sale, if nobody buys it at the tax sale, then the police jury acquired it, and that's gonna be the first thing to do, is find out any properties that are adjudicated to the police. You may have, uh, you probably have quite a few of them, and when you have quite a few of them, the best thing to do is put it back in circulation, because when you sell this property, somebody's gonna be paying the property tax on it from now on out. So you're gonna make a little bit when you sell it, not gonna sell it for an absorbent amount, but you're gonna sell it, you may make a little profit on it now when you sell it, but it's gonna bring it back on the tax bill, so that's how many.
That's how many concern.
So the main thing is just find out what properties that you have.
This particular property, may I want to point this out, this is, set it right back here, this is the home that been adjudicated.
The first, um, steps with the process before was the, the appraisal.
So you're gonna motion for the jury to, to take the necessary actions, go and try to get the property present, or take bids on it. And we're discussing, question from the audience, is it all in favor? In oppose, motion carries. Next on the agenda, approve amendment to the twenty twenty six Polish year holiday.
So, um, at the last meeting, you all did table it, so I, so you all wanted, I guess we could explain to you, um, Mr. JR said that there was a holiday there for Friday, and you're all on, um, that Friday, so we were asking if we could have that holiday on the late night. And then I probably got the question about the number of holidays that we have, and I know since I've been here up until the June ten holiday, it was always thirteen of the holidays until the June ten holiday was picked into the holidays, so are there esportsing? And it's always the same every year, maybe, um, on election, or sometimes things change, we may do a little changing to bring for the jury to be changed with the number of holidays, yes.
So they're free to decide.
But thought on the Friday, we give them Wednesday instead of.
Could you put it on Monday instead of Friday, or Wednesday?
Um, I think the Monday after that, maybe, um, what would that Monday be? That Monday would probably be. That Monday, well, that will go into your twenty twenty seven.
No, because it's in December.
This is the thirty first of December.
Right, of twenty twenty six, so.
So it got.
So we have to have it, unless the, um, that Monday is like a thirty first, but it can't be a thirty first, because you were probably.
So the jury office is really gonna be closed?
That was on Christmas, the Christmas, Christmas.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so it's gonna be three days.
Yeah.
Well, Wednesday and Thursday's gonna be two days.
Two days.
Because Friday, Friday is a January day, right, so, but it's still, it'll be closed.
Three days, and a lot of times, I think, um, when the holiday falls at late in the month, that Monday is usually a jury meeting. Like for this holiday that we just had, the, that Monday.
But that Monday's the twenty eighth, right? See, twenty four, that, that's what we're talking about, right, twenty four, twenty fifth, and that Monday falls on the twenty eighth after Christmas?
We need to take reference pairs, this pairs week, that's given with that Thursday, right, so we're giving the Wednesday off. You know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it's same difference.
If you all get the twenty eighth, and that's the Monday, maybe we would be all set Monday, I guess they, Wednesday, be all, um, new year.
I move to accept the prison.
I'll second.
Your recommendation?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Question from the audience, all in favor? In oppose, motion carries. Okay, anything else, Harris? On that? Okay, let's move on. Discuss, take action necessary on arbitration opioid litigation fund. At the last meeting, I went to table this until the first of the year. Mr. Aldo's is going to make the decision tonight. We have three people wanna apply for it, and I don't wanna see the money split three different ways.
I'd like to table it till the first of the year.
I know they told you we're gonna have a decision tonight.
Well, how do you even see the money split?
One person administrate.
When Jersey gets it off?
Even the sheriff wanna force it up, but he already got opioid money.
And who's gone?
The drug counsel. I think Mr. Jake, Jake, you want?
Yeah, we can waive ours. I mean, we need it, but, you know, if you have three people, you can split it up three different.
I know we can. Yeah.
Drug counsel really does a lot to the parish, and I think that's really appropriate place for it here, but it's y'all's decision.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jake. That's my opinion also. I would hate to see it split up, but that's up to the jury.
So, so, I mean, it's, the sheriff's department, I was reading up on, they get twenty percent?
We got the own money.
So, so, they, they get a payment too? So, it's not, it's not one pile of money, they get the twenty percent out of that one pile and it.
They get the.
So, we split between these two? How will we do that? So, we're gonna get a certain percent, or you gonna do fifty-fifty? How is that gonna be done?
I also suggested that we do the CPR, um, the automatic CPR machines for the, for the fire people.
Yeah.
That would leave us a pair of, yeah.
Living soon, and I looked up a couple of ones to get it too.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see the, the fire department's been fit some from it too. My opinion, that's my opinion.
But do they generate their own money? Do they give funds?
With, tell me it's fire district? Fire district gets funded, but you have these volunteer fire departments too.
This could be a state, a, a, a state, I mean, we need to go and use this money, money just sitting there, we need to make some kind of decision, who gonna administer it. It's most preventive, it's not, it's not.
So, guess the thing, she, what is the total amount? Is it at the bottom of seven, six thousand?
That's how much they want. What is the total that we can split between the two?
So, right now, um, in the fund is three hundred and nine thousand dollars.
It's a lot of money standing.
Yeah, it's three hundred and nine thousand dollars, and I think I, um, did mention to you all around our audit last year, um, we spoke with our auditors and he did tell me that, and there was gonna, they were, it was going back to the task force, they were gonna make some things broader, um, you know, for you all again, approved to give, let drug counsel. Administering the three hundred and nine thousand dollars, I know it's just sitting there.
It's sitting there.
And, but there's no time limit on spending.
No, it's sitting there. They was far. Even the coroner, even, Mr. McCray was saying, even the coroner was far.
I, I, and then you also have to do like any other money that you have.
Mm-hmm.
You have to.
Be counted for.
It has to be counted for.
That's right.
Submit.
That's right.
Different information when spending this money. So, we also met, we also discussed this too with the financial advisors and just different things that you have to do out your general fund, um, if there's some kind of way the funds can help with that. I know too that Ms. Wong and them will do a, a, a great job as well, but we also wanna think about too, Mr. on Dequilla's office and the different things that we have to do with Mr. Dequilla's office. So, I know that we've had this money and it seems like it's been forever, but I'd rather not to say sit on it another year, but it's the end of the year, the beginning of the year. We have the budget, so much stuff going on right now, so if you could kinda let us settle down.
Well, we've got so many people trying to get a piece of the pie, you gotta sit down and come up with. With a plan on how you gonna distribute it. And it seems like then that all of it to the finance committee, and they come back to the regular table with, with some suggestion, with something. I mean, how you gonna just say, well, you just gonna split it up?
Like, I don't wanna give all of three hundred thousand to them, all they need is seventy-six thousand for another office case.
Can I, can I say something?
Say tonight.
I think, I'm sorry, Rhonda Torrance, Felicia Anna Drug Council, and Dr. Deborah Thomas. I'd looked back at the, um, the opioid, opioid abatement strategies when we had the discussion at the last meeting. And there is, um, other agencies that are entitled to the money. I know Mr. Dequilla's office does, uh, what do you call it, uh, pre-diversion programs and things like that. And in the strategies, it talked about that. So, I don't know if that program in his office is funded through the police jury or not, but that is something that this money could be used for, pre-diversion, that's what it's called. So, our main thing is, we wanna, we, we did our, uh, policy or, you know, our, uh, proposal, thank you, couldn't think of that word, based on the seventy-six thousand that we asked for last year when we were gonna implement the program. So, that's what we're looking for this year. We're not looking for the whole three hundred and nine thousand. We're looking for the seventy-six thousand for twenty twenty-six calendar year, along with the administrative costs that we had signed the MOU for, which would be for the drug council, that entity, to administer that particular program with, um, the attachments that you see there.
What was the third officer that was wanting that corner's office?
Corner, the corner was forced it up.
It was the discussion about body bag.
Body bag and.
Also a discussion about.
And men for the, for the, for the corner's office.
Land's office, corner.
So, you got four people.
And the fire.
She gonna get you the fire department.
I wanna give some to emergency.
I think that we should split it up a month. I don't think it, why don't you get all of it, never mind.
I just wanna make sure that if you all approve it for us to implement this program, that we don't just implement it for twenty twenty-six because you've given all the money away and there's nothing left in twenty twenty-seven. I understand that there is a number of pharmaceutical companies and that monies will continually come in, but I would hate to see us start this program and only be able to do it for a year because you've given all the money out. That, that's the only thing I, I have to, you know.
That's gonna be a yearly base, because if we run out of money.
Right, right, right. We just want, what we would like is for that program to be sustainable because it would, uh, help the DA's office. And I spoke to the sheriff today, um, and he told me about a scanner, but he just assumed. Right, right, and, and he said that, and, and the, the MOU describes that, right, yeah.
And that scanner's real expensive.
It's over a hundred thousand dollars, yeah, yeah. So, I, I definitely agree that there should be other agencies that get it. We're not looking for the whole three hundred thousand. We just wanna make sure the program's sustainable once we start.
How, how the bed been prevented? You did, we get body.
Well, I, I, I guess it depends on how you look at it. If there is a death in the parish as a result of opioid, you know, then I, I could definitely see using a portion of that money. And I mean, we're not talking, I don't know what a body bag costs, but I can't imagine we're talking a whole lot of money. We've got three hundred and nine thousand dollars. You know, we're asking for seventy-nine of it for twenty twenty-six. Um, and then whatever, you know, the DA's office is entitled to, you all, that, you know, would be up to you all to figure it out. Again, I'm gonna stress, I just wanna make sure that if we start this program, it's sustainable, that when twenty twenty-seven rolls around, there's at least the seventy-nine thousand, you know, that we asked for, for twenty twenty-six.
We got thirteen appointment, didn't take it off.
Do we need to spend it all, or we, or we gonna hold something?
That money, money there, it ain't going nowhere. You don't have to spend it all. For a year. Twenty years.
But in no year would you receive one year seventy-six thousand dollars?
No, it might be small, it might be more. Yes, sir.
We gave, we give them their seventy-six thousand this year, and then next year, we will decide how we gonna disperse the rest of the money, parity.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Can we get that, um, contention on, we can give them this full seventy-six thousand dollars in our seventy-nine or eighty or higher?
How much was seventy-nine?
Seventy-six. Seventy-six thousand five seventy-one.
I wanna make sure that we can give them the eighty and we're done with the eighty. Like, on my report, I can say eighty thousand dollars was given to, um, the drug counsel, and she don't have to bring receipts for me to put in, but every bit of that eighty thousand dollars, that's something that we discuss with the financial advisor as well. If you wanna give it to someone, I want us to be able to report it in amongst all, and we not have to.
I, I, I understand, but so with that, Ms. Amisha, but you, um, since you say that, do we still have to find out what they are spending the money on though?
Yeah, we still have to know.
Right, and, and I gave you, in your attachment, you see how we broke it down, um, between the staff and, uh, the actual treatment program? And again, this was from last year, so Dart Insurance, I'm sure liability insurance has gone up, um, from what it was in twenty twenty-four.
And see, that's what I'm getting to. I know this is just a projection.
Right, right, exactly.
When you do it, then there should be a receipt there somewhere.
Oh, we'll have receipts for, we, we keep receipts for every single thing we do. We always have receipts to back up what we do. Because we've gotten federal funding, and with federal funding, you've gotta be able to back up what you disperse. So, we know how to do that.
It's public money, we have to have receipts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, they have to keep documentation.
Yeah.
And we will.
And we have.
I think the only one that's not required this year. I don't think this year required this year. I don't think.
So, that means with the, the amount of money we have to keep up still in office, keep up with, and we pay all of their invoices?
No, I mean, you just, you just kept saying, she's saying, she.
Right. I can submit quarterly reports if.
She can do all the reporting and give us your, you don't have to pay her bills. She can do, have your own.
Right, if, if you give us the seventy-six, five, seventy-one, say eighty thousand dollars, I'll do a quarterly report or a monthly, however you want it, show what our payroll was. You know, if we buy two dozen drug testing kits, there'll be the receipt for that. You know, our, our Zoom cost, because we'll do telehealth, you know, you, you have all of that. It'll be broken down. You know, you just have to let me know if you want it monthly, if you want it quarterly, however you want it, is how we submit it. And, and again, this was twenty twenty-four, so some of these things may have changed, you know, slightly. But I didn't wanna go through all of this until I knew where we were. So, now, if it's approved, I'll go back and confirm that liability insurance has gone up and this is what it is and so on and so forth, and I'll submit all that information to you, Amisha.
You got a motion?
Mr. Aldo, you make the motion.
He makes the motion.
Make the motion to get.
He made it.
I'll say.
Get a lot of discussion, get more discussion. Question from the audience?
And one last thing, this will be implemented in twenty twenty-six. We're looking at probably February to, uh, to start the program.
Any more discussion, question from the audience? In our favor? In a poll, motion carried. Eighty thousand, Mr. Aldo.
Uh, just one last thing, in reviewing the MOU, I noticed that it said at least annually, each qualified parish and lead parish shall provide to the state and the task force a report detailing for the proceedings. So, even though funds haven't been dispersed, I don't know if y'all have, if you haven't, I think you should, send some sort of report to the state and the task force, um, because I'm afraid if that hasn't been done, we might lose the money.
Really spending none of the year.
Am I right, Sam?
You should follow it up with a report.
Yeah. Even though nothing's been dispersed, but even though nothing's been dispersed so far, should they, they still should. Okay, 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 that's it.
So, you got there, you got there, it's all.
Thank you.
Shake your head, you wanna come and address this here? You got, you shaking your head, you wanna address this here?
Y'all already made the decision, you rounded it up, and I'm sorry, just like a, just like a grant. When you get a grant, you have the grant money comes in, you got an opioid grant for the abatement fund. You have to, everything comes that you disperse out of there has to be tagged in some way. If it's seventy-nine thousand five hundred, you can't round up to eighty because that's a five hundred dollar discrepancy on an audit. When the coroner's office, we're talking about two years of total thirty-five hundred dollars. This total in this year is gonna be down because we haven't had that many overdoses. It's gonna be less, but it's exact amounts. It's not rounded up, you have to put against it.
It's seventy-six.
Seventy-six, five, seventy.
I mean, she's gonna redo her figures, but what I'm saying is, that's what you have to do.
But let me just give you an example. We've got drug kits in here.
And let's say we end up having to purchase more than the amount we allocated, or, um, you know, we need to do more telehealth visits than the one, than the amount we've allocated. Or we need to do more background checks. I mean, there's no way for us to know. Um, I just basically told you what a, a drug screen pickup, one drug screen pickup would cost. But if we have a dozen in a month's time, then, you know, these figures are not gonna be correct. But there's no way for us to know that because we don't know how many patients we're gonna have. Um, when we presented this last year, we had talked to Judge Jones, and, uh, we were gonna work with her to figure out how we were gonna get the, uh, the patients, or patients. So, um, I'll go back to her and, you know, we'll figure out, um, how we're gonna get them. Before she said through probation and parole, I believe. But all of that and saying, these figures are as exact as they could be, or, or as they were at that time. I'll go back and look at it, um, and see how much it's changed. But, you know, when it comes to telehealth visits, drug screens or whatever, we don't know how much that's gonna be. And, and I agree with JR, uh, you know, a grant, you get X amount of dollars. We've gotten them for the last ten years. It just ended in September. But this is a little different because you've got this bulk of money. So, it's not like you only got seventy-seven thousand dollars. You got three hundred and six thousand or whatever the number was.
You keep losing it.
I got so much, I'm trying to look up so much stuff at one time. Next on the agenda, committee's.
You voted, did you?
Yes.
You voted for it. You made, you made, yeah, you made the motion. And all that.
And we didn't have these. Here's the drug stuff. You might even find this himself.
My gentleman.
Agenda.
Let's move on. Commitment's. Every committee appoint death due to the poison, how many advocates do we have? One? Who was there, Max?
Greg Wa.
Greg, Greg Wa.
Greg.
Greg Wa.
Greg Wa. We have a time, we have one advocate.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mark Greg Wa, and, uh, current serving board of commissioners for Gas Utility District Number Two, and I'm here for reappointment tonight.
Move to accept, Mr. Greg.
We have one advocate. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Question from the audience, in the honor favor? In a pause?
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
I have another, one other thing I have, as you know, as of December thirty-first, our resident voter will not resign, she will retire. They got, they said resignation, but she didn't quit, she retired, with almost fifty years of service, that would keep being a woman. Effective December thirty-first.
So we just, we have to vote to accept the resignation, or is it just for?
Retire.
Well, well, I mean, do we still?
We have another day to appoint the owner.
That's a point.
Appoint, not a next to appoint, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so you all have some more to, to, um. So, to report someone, um, anything, until then, the chief deputy would be.
I have to, rest of the board.
And we have a strict checklist that we have to go by. So it starts in office, with putting the words out to the public. So I know that you all will see people that are interested, that want to.
Already had some, had some.
But if they're too premature, it won't, um, it won't be working. So if you can give, um, Mr. Lewis a, a, a little time, instead of being premature with sending stuff to him or into the office, because if we do things too early, it's not gonna, they'll just have to.
We have, we have ninety days. I have to require the coroner's in a bucket position, so. But, December thirty-first, we have retirement.
And how long?
She said we all would be.
Long time.
She almost, almost fifty years.
Yeah, I know, it's been a long time.
Give us, yeah, that'll make it happen. Okay, that's all I have. Personnel community, that's Chris Elko.
Um, we have not had a meeting recently, but we need to go ahead and have one to continue working on our personnel, um, our procedures for personnel, policy.
Policy procedure.
We'll have one probably during the month of December.
Yeah.
For, for when?
It's Christmas, let's do something else.
We have a lot going on, I mean.
Well, we gonna have to have a purpose work, Mr. Two, I've been trying to have one for the last three weeks. Been flopped, been out, and I gotta wait them to come back.
She gonna be out till after new, after the new year.
Well, we'll meet with KJ.
And that is just so many days before Christmas.
Before vacation.
Before, a lot of people taking vacation time and everything, so. Okay, let's move on, finest committee, these asking tonight, so I just need a motion to approve money invoices. Any more discussion? Question from the audience, in the honor favor? In a pause, motion can. Public working equipment, Mr. Jason McCray.
Um, just wanted to let, know that we have a meeting very soon, as soon as possible, I get with my members and I get back with you.
Thank you, sir. Building properties, Mr. Dexter Alstead.
Yes, sir, uh, well, we scheduled a, a meeting, but this year, Yamiche had, um, depth in the family, so anyway, Ms. Yamiche, we gonna just schedule one next year, okay? So give you time to catch up with all these, all right, so, but that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir, seems like a long time, but next year, right around the corner.
Right there, it's right there, a few weeks away.
Okay, administrative matters.
Okay, so I have, um, just you think, one thing, I think that you all, um, who are paid, um, with the monthly, this is the first time that a payroll was ran for you all with, um, the new software.
And guess who didn't get paid?
So, um, Mr. Lewis, so we're happy, back at the person that didn't was the, the president, he comes in every day, so we were able to get that fixed for him today, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for being patient.
Gotta be.
With, with us on that, um, but everything is working well, we're still getting used to the, to the new system. The first payroll was ran, and, um, like I said, this, this month was the first, um, payroll, Mr. Lewis too, thank you for getting out on Friday and delivering some checks, Mr. DeQuillo's office, but we're gonna work, um, to make sure we have everything out in time with the rest of the payrolls. And we also, like I said, we still have our new accounting system that we're getting used to, and we thank Father May for being patient with us.
We thank you.
Because in the office, we're all, it, it's new to us, so we're getting to, um, learn how to use that. I also have the public hearings at five-thirty, um, at your next meeting on fifteen, just to adopt the, the budget. I already mentioned the adjudicated properties, I wanted to let you, give you all an update about that, and what we were gonna do in office. And L-GAP to twenty-five, twenty-six, and I wanna thank Mr. Rishon again, because you know that we need those years closed out so we can, um, apply for the L-GAP grant. We are waiting on, um, an award approval for the renovations to be done over at DPW. Once we get an award approval, then we can go ahead and start to work on having that done. But just to let you know, this is, uh, reimbursing. So you'll skim that money upfront, have all the documentation, and there's a quick turnaround with the, with the closeout. I think as soon as we got the information from Waterworks, maybe in like a week or two, we will actually get in, in what we need. And twenty-five, twenty-six is now open, it's sixty thousand dollars, the deadline to have that, the application done is February, and Diana and I looked over some stuff with that, it can be used for equipment, I mean, sixty thousand dollars, we'll be grateful for that, it's not a whole lot, but there's, you know, different things that you can do with that fund.
So hard to me.
And I think that may be it, unless you have questions. I wanna thank you all for the prayers, um, my grandmother passed, ninety-eight years old.
Full life.
And, yes, she did not suffer, so, um, I just wanna thank you all for keeping, keeping me, my family, and the police jury, um, office staff, so. That's it, effort understanding that I.
I understand.
We all, we all in it together, believe.
We all go through it.
I, that's it, unless you have a.
Any more questions for, for? Let's move on, next, planning, commissioning board, planning is on, have a recommendation to approve eight duty, the motion?
A motion.
Second.
Any discussion, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Dexter Alstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Tastings?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan? Is absent. Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakland?
Yes.
President Lewis Kent?
Yes. Any more questions, planning is on, and now we can move to public comment. I would like to say something while we're sitting here. As elected officials, we're obligated to do our job. And first of all, you lead by what, example? Now, I'm digging in my church, and I always think, leaders are born, not made. You can't take a meal and make a courthouse out of it, you just can't do it. You're born to be, you could be a leader. We're all, we're all accustomed to trying to make leaders, but God always instilled a person to be a leader. He born, he born in you to be a leader. And when you're leading, you make compromise, you try to work together. Next call by leaving by example, you ain't always right, you ain't always wrong. Leaders don't go about talking behind each other's back, talking about each other. We all live together, we should work together. If you got a question for one individual, you should know, everything here we discuss is public knowledge. It is, there's no hidden agenda, if you wanna know something, you come out and talk with everybody, and ask a question. Or look, I think, Yamiche, answer any question you want, dealing with this jury. I'd probably be more telling all y'all combined. I know what's going on, being the president, I should know what's going on, and each juror should know what's going on. Okay, it's understanding, you lead by example, okay? I don't say no jury here, I would get behind their back and talk about. If I got a problem with you, I'm gonna come to you all. If I got a question, I'm gonna ask you all a question. And I've been here thirty-two years almost, and my door always have been open, it gonna stay open. I'm gonna be transparent, I'm gonna be honest, I'm gonna be real, and I want y'all to know that. That was leaving by example, okay? My word is not gospel, I make mistakes too. If anybody here present at this table, raise your right hand. I don't think anybody raised their hand, 'cause no one here's questioning, okay? I had to get that from my chest, okay? 'Cause we're always bored, it's not about Lewis Kent, and not about these other eight jurors on this board, it about the jury. And there's no eye in jury, it's not. That's all I have to say. Any more public comments? I want to, all in favor? Let's go home.
Katie come back to see you today? Did Katie come back to see you today, or did she call you?
I don't know.
She's got a, that's Joshua's secretary, she's got a Ford tire, if she wants to, she bought the tire, she's bringing it to you. To get.
I put them on.
That's her husband, that was the police officer, and you told her, you tell him to do the police, and let you take care of her tires.
Yeah.
So that's who that is.